Welcome everybody to our Kingsburg City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Ricky Chambers of Kingsburg Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening humbly lifting up our community to you. We ask for your grace and your mercy to bound in and among us here. We thank you for the city and for your faithfulness in the past, and so we trust you for the future. So Father, just want to lift up each council member here, our mayor, our city manager, all the city staff, the police chief and fire chief. Thank you, Lord, for appointing each one of them, choosing them to lead this community. Lord, we're so blessed with great leaders here. So continue to strengthen them, give them your discernment and wisdom to lead wisely, and just bless their families and guard their hearts and their minds in Christ Jesus. So we pray for this agenda I set before them today. Just give assurance of what would please you, what would benefit those who live here and work here around our beloved city of Kingsburg. May it always be a place where people seek to serve rather than to be served, to love and to be a blessing, and to give generously. We thank you for this place. We thank you for the example you've set for us in Christ Jesus. It's in his name we pray. Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ricky. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Abby, can you please take your call?
President?
Here.
Here. Next, we need to approve the agenda. Action by council to approve the agenda or to make modifications. Items that can be added to the agenda is constrained by state law. Can I get a motion to approve?
One second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion is approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation of swearing in of Anthony Fangthong, firefighter, EMT. Hope I said that right. Okay, thank you.
And his first name is an amazing mouthful. Is it fourteen letters? Fourteen letters in his first name alone. We'll let him pronounce it, so I don't do it injustice. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. I would like to introduce to you this evening Anthony Fangthong. He comes to us from Fresno. He's a unique find for us here in our community. He's very diverse. He speaks fluent Lao. As a matter of fact, I think he passed his test today. Oh, he didn't get a chance to take it. Oh, darn it. He was gonna, he was gonna take his bilingual test. It's not his only thing that we hired him for. He graduated from Fresno State in two thousand and twenty with a business degree. So he has a baccalaureate degree. He went back to school to go to Fire Academy in two thousand and twenty-two, or two thousand and twenty-one? No, sorry, two thousand and twenty-two, and graduated there in two thousand and twenty-two. We picked him up as an intern, as we have with our last few really good finds of employees. He proved himself to be very, very worthy of serving the community of Kingsburg, and therefore tonight, we want to honor him with pinning a badge on him for the position of firefighter, EMT. And just as a side note, this was a position that was vacated by another individual who left the organization on, off of probation. From day one, Anthony impressed everyone in the department with his dedication, work ethic, and commitment, and was encouraged to stay on as a part-time firefighter, EMT in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. Anthony continued to excel in his abilities as a firefighter and EMT, and was moved from part-time firefighter, EMT, to full-time permanent firefighter, EMT late this August. So literally less than a week and a half ago, he became a full-time employee. Besides having been a tepanyaki chef, Anthony speaks fluent Lao and has worked as an interpreter and as well as a teacher's assistant. He will be pinned tonight by his fiancee, Magda Solis. And we'll get to that in just a little bit. Can we have Anthony come to the center for the lectern, please, for swearing in by the city clerk? And she will administer your oath of office.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
You solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I will take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of my duty to my God's honor.
Now, if we could have Anthony's fiancee, Magda, come up? She gets to pin his badge on officially. When you do, straight in, fill it in. All right. Why don't you stand there and take some pictures? All right. Take some pictures with you first, with your
family?
Family? Anthony's father?
Sister? Yes.
And Anthony's sister?
Other sister? No, all of you guys.
Get everybody up there.
Oh, say cheese. He's the only one. I got it. Tons of them. Okay.
Perfect. All right, we can have members of council? You can't recruit now.
It's too late. Oh, how nice. Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. Thank you very much, members of the, of council, Mr. Mayor, and members of the public.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Next on our agenda, we have public comment. This is time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Do we have anybody here tonight that would like to address our city council on an item that is not on our agenda? Do, okay. Please come forward and just state if you're a resident of Kingsburg, please. How we can hear you?
You can turn around that way. You can do it. Tonight is learning, learning daddy. See, you got this. How about you start off with just telling them your name. Turn around and start with your name. You got this. Read the first line. It's your name. It's the easiest one.
Hi, my name is Riker.
There you go. And where do you live?
I live in Kingsburg.
Okay, tell them the rest. You got it. You said you wanted to do this. You're good.
I'm in eighth grade at Rafer Johnson Junior High.
You got this. Next line.
I'm not able to cross the street in front of my school because the crosswalks do not have ramps. I would like to ask the cities to fix that, please. I want to be able to cross the street like the other kids. Thank you.
Thank you. We're not allowed to comment, but we'll take this into consideration, his comment tonight. Thank you.
Can we direct staff to what you have at that matter force, please?
Do we have anybody else here tonight that would like to address our city council on any issue not on the agenda?
Hold it up. You got it? That way they can see. It doesn't matter.
Good evening. My name is Heather Dunn, and I'm a resident of Kingsburg. More importantly, I'm Riker's mom. I had to help my son last night with a school assignment, and I want to share with you what he wrote, and I'm gonna try and do it without crying. The assignment was called Labels. He wrote, "I don't know if it would be considered being called a name, but lots of people see my wheelchair instead of me as a person. One time, we were at lunch in a restaurant, and the waiter looked at me and then looked at my mom and asked, 'What's wrong with him?'" It made me feel really sad. There isn't anything wrong with me. I might have been born differently, but that doesn't mean there's anything wrong with me. I want people to like me because I'm me. I want people to see me and not my wheelchair. I feel like they label me as different or not as good as other kids when they say things like that. I try not to label other people because I know what it feels like to be labeled as something that isn't good all the time. I think it would hurt other people's feelings if I label them. I want people to know that being different is okay. Being different isn't bad or sad or less than other people. It's just being different. Being different is a good thing. It would be boring if we were all the same. I want people to know that I am fun to play with. I'm kind. I'm smart. I want people to know that I'm brave. I've had to go through a lot of hard things. I'm brave. You got to see Riker here being brave tonight and learning how to advocate for his needs and for equal access, and I think that's important. I'm also here today to advocate for Riker, and I'm requesting that the crosswalks on Stroud Avenue in front of Rafer Johnson Junior High School marked as school crossings have ramps added to make them accessible. My son cannot cross the street in front of his own school. To be clear, this is a city issue. The school district's been amazing, so this isn't a school district. This is the city crosswalks. The city has also been amazing in the past. In two thousand and eighteen for Halloween, council member North noticed that Riker couldn't get up onto the band shell, the band shell stage in Memorial Park like all the other kids during a costume contest, and she told me that night that she would push to make it accessible, and I'm thankful that he now has access there. I previously requested crosswalks near my home to be made accessible. I was told they were added to the list of the next curb cuts, and then nothing happened. I waited four years and reached back out to the city, and then two months later, the crosswalks were accessible, and I'm so thankful that the city made the walkways around our home accessible. Now, I'm asking the city to schedule the work in front of Rafer Johnson Junior High School sooner than later. Title two of the ADA took effect January twenty-second, nineteen ninety-two. Rafer Johnson Junior High School was built in nineteen ninety-three. Before that, it was ag land. There were no crosswalks or development on that side of the street. There are two crosswalks directly in front of Rafer Johnson Junior High School, and neither of them are accessible. The crosswalk to the west has been there since at least two thousand and seven. That's the earliest Google Maps image that I can find of that. The crosswalk to the east was added a little bit later. When I was looking through the city's transition plan from February of two thousand and twenty and the GIS map that it shows, neither of those crosswalks are marked on there. I think maybe because they aren't directly at a corner. They're in the mid-block, and so they're not even in that plan. I've been in the contact with the city for eleven months now regarding those crosswalks. In October of twenty-two, I was told that crosswalks would be completed in twenty-three to not disrupt traffic in front of the school. I'm not unreasonable. I waited until the beginning of this next summer to reach out again. My first two emails went unanswered, so I made a phone call. I was then told that there were no funds to complete the work, and it would have to wait until July in a new fiscal year. July came and went, and I reached out in August. I've now been told that funding has been secured, and they're working to schedule with a concrete contractor. That was three weeks ago. I reached out to council member Smith this last week, hoping she'd be able to help since it's in her district. I put a post on social media, and another council member reached out because of that post. I was assured by both that I would have an update last week and by Friday, and I received one tonight here in chambers. I'm here today so that you have a face to go with the request. I have a photo of my son sitting at the crosswalk for each of you. My son, I want you to remember my son. I want you to fight for my son and for others. My son deserves to be able to cross the street in front of his school. Family members of students coming to events at the school deserve to be able to cross the street like everybody else. Future students deserve to be able to cross the street like everybody else. My son may be different, but don't you think he should be able to cross the street in front of his own school? Please, I'm asking you to schedule the work sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Anybody else in our chamber that would like to address the city council on public comment tonight that something is not on the agenda? Please come up and just state your name, and if you're a resident of Kingsburg.
Good evening. My name is David Butler, and I'd like to know why your chief of police and other members of the police force committed felony perjury to get a no-knock warrant. Fourteen people came into my house with masks, locks, and loaded and everything. I wonder why you ain't been fired? Committed perjury. And all the evidence there is, is there to prove it. And I've decided I'm filing a civil suit against you. I'm gonna seek to have every one of those cops put on the Brady List, that they are liars, every one of them. Which one of you is Alex?
That's me.
I heard you started all this crap when you told them to put me in my place. What do you think my place is? In prison? Because that's exactly what you tried to do to me, totally destroy my life. A liar. Guess I said the word fuck it, city hall.
Sir, I've never, I've never met you. So, but if you could please direct your comments to council, they're the ones that you're speaking to tonight.
Never met me, but you had nothing to do with this.
You have, you can make your comments to the council, and then you need to excuse yourself, because they, they'll hear your comments, and they'll take your comments into consideration, but it's not, the public comment is not a place to argue or make accusations.
I'll just ask them out of question, and why you do it?
They won't be able to answer that question. They've received your comments. Your comments have been placed on the record for the city council meeting, but they will not be responding to your question tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. You folks have a terrible day.
Does anybody else here tonight for, to address the city council on any subject that is not on the agenda? No, okay, then we'll move on to consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recitals, readings, ordinances by titles only, and adoption of recommended action contained in staff reports. Tonight, we have five point one through five point twelve. Does any council member wish to pull a consent calendar item?
No.
No. Does anybody from the public wish to pull a consent calendar item? Hearing none? Can I get a motion to approve consent calendar, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have regular calendar. Six point one, California State Senator Melissa Hurtado update. Sponsor is State Senator Hurtado. Presentation by Joshua Golden, field representative for Melissa Hurtado, for Senator Hurtado.
I guess when I decided to speak, everybody wanted to leave. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Joshua Golden. I am the, one of the field representatives in the Tulare Office for Senator Melissa Hurtado. I started back in July. I actually wanted to do this, I believe, at the last council meeting, but I got sick and was not able to come in, so we are getting towards the end of the legislative session, but we're still looking for support for three different bills. These are three of the kind of major ones that she's looking at. The first one is Senate Bill number two thirty-one. Now, Senate Bill two thirty-one came about because of an audit that was done on the Department of Water Resources. So the Department of Water Resources had been using different models to kind of decide where water was gonna go, how much water to let out, how much water to go in the Delta, how much water to go to farmers, et cetera. Problem was, come to find out, they were using models from back in the seventies for some of these things. And as an example, so last year, there could have been seven hundred thousand acre feet of water for the Central Valley for farming, and also there was, I want to say, a million acre feet that had gone into the Delta that was not used for any purpose. It just went out to the ocean. So when we do hear that water is just given to the ocean, that is one of them. So what this does, uh, excuse me, Senate Bill number two thirty-one would require DWR to use the, the recommendations of the audit in order to decide how water is delivered to different areas. So looking for support on that. If you have any questions, I can definitely answer those. The next one is Senate Bill number two sixty-five. This is a Cybersecurity Preparedness Act. So I'm sure we've heard of lots of different cyber attacks. I'm not sure if some of you are aware. The multi, the real estate system where real estate agents use to look at homes and list homes was actually down in Fresno for about a week. I think it's about two or three weeks ago. They weren't able to do anything. The housing market was stopped. So what this bill does, it directs the Cal OES and the Cal CSIC to put aside money and develop outreach for cybersecurity preparedness in the state of California. That's gonna work for police departments, fire departments, city governments, et cetera. And the last one we're looking at, and perfect for tonight, the State Fire Training Accessibility Act. A lot of times, people going for, trying to become firefighters, it's hard. There's not enough money going around. There's not enough money in the programs. There's not enough money for them to get the equipment that they need in order to get through these programs. SB five seventy-seven allows the state fire marshal to accept additional funding sources for the California Fire Service Training and Education Program. This would permit the state fire marshal to receive additional funding sources for training and would help mitigate rising fees for those seeking fire training certification. As you guys are probably well aware, there's lots of cities that are looking to fill those fire positions, and they're not very easy. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them right now.
Yeah, I have a question. So, Mr. Golden, when you ask for you'd like support, what does that entail? Is that a financial thing?
No, it's like a letter of support.
A letter of support?
A letter of support.
Hurtado's office
Yes, yes.
On these three bills.
On these three bills, yes. Yeah, and we do have, like, templates that can be used. You can just insert, you know, city council, the city, boom, and it's ready to go.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm, I would like some time to maybe
Yeah, absolutely. No, absolutely. I completely understand. I wasn't expecting you to be like, here, you know, here's the letter right now.
But no, I do appreciate
Yeah. And like I said, I would have liked to have done this a few weeks earlier, but COVID and I didn't want to come in and get everybody sick, so.
What is the senators', what is she gonna do about water storage? Because I didn't, when I was reading through this, I didn't see
Yeah, this bill doesn't have anything to do with water storage.
Very important topic.
You know, she, she did help bring money. Water storage is still something that everybody is working on. You know, there's so many different projects that are going on in the state of California. You know, she, she would like to, and she has, along with other members of the Central Valley, you know, advocated for more water storage in the Central Valley, because this is where we need it the most. But the hard part is, as you guys know, the Central Valley, I, we have one, two, you know, maybe four or five, as opposed, there's forty senators, and I think there's two from the Central, three from the Central Valley. So there's thirty-seven other senators from other parts of the, the state that don't see it as much. So that, it's something that, you know, she's continuing to work on and trying to, she did, she was able to bring different senators down here during the flooding to kind of show them exactly what was going on and the need for water storage and the need for different infrastructure. So they may have actually seen it, I think, probably has helped a little bit instead of just, you know, what everybody's telling them. They actually saw it face to face. They walked through everything. They saw Tulare Lake. So, you have any other questions?
I can say I've had, I've had conversation directly with her about that. I know we don't necessarily see eye to eye on all political
Right.
But I do know that when it comes to the water stuff, she was very supportive with what our, what our needs will be for that. Did you have anything else?
I'm just that I'd like to get your contact information
Absolutely.
Because I have sent emails and requested some conversations about other things with her and had no reply.
Okay, I'd be happy to help you with that. And, sorry, can you have that? Everything's right on there. And just one other thing, I mean, if there's no other questions, end of session is coming up, but again, you know, then session will start right back up again in January, and that'll be the time to talk about different projects that you may be wanting to work on within the city that you may want to request some funding for through the state, you know, and we would be happy to help you with that. Sit down, kind of figure out what you need, how much you need, and then we present it to the senator, and we can go from there.
So generally, as a council, we don't send letters of support to city stuff on it, but I think if you wanted to send it to us individually?
Okay.
I have some, I have some questions about two thirty-one specifically that I would want to talk to you about.
Absolutely.
It's a clarification of two eighteen, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
So I think that's, I need to unpack that a little bit as far
Okay.
The tax structuring.
No, I, I understand. And what I can do, because like I said, the bill is based on the audit that was done in two thousand and twenty-two, I can send you that audit. I mean, it is about seventy pages long, and it is a little bit of dry reading, but, you know, there's actually some interesting things in there that you can learn, and it can kind of, you can kind of see exactly what two thirty-one's trying, or, yeah, two thirty-one's trying to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we have any, anybody from the public that has a comment on this agenda item? No?
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it, and I look forward to talking to you guys.
Thank you. Move on, six point two. City Solar Array Project Funding Update. Report by Public Works Director Daniel Galvez. Presentation by Daniel Galvez.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, city staff is back here to give you an update and, uh, also, uh, provide some additional information for, uh, the solar project. Uh, so we've continued to work with SiteLogic, uh, to develop, uh, the solar projects at, well, thirteen, sixteen Police Department and Public Works Yard. Uh, the NIM two applications have been submitted to PG&E and have been approved. Uh, the designs remain relatively unchanged. Uh, we have worked on the additional renderings and landscaping options at well sixteen. Um, but one of the biggest challenges and changes that has come, uh, from the project has been, uh, the options to pay for the project. Uh, so initially, the project was proposed, uh, to council to utilize an, uh, equal, uh, Energy Conservation Assistance Act loan, uh, which provided a one percent interest, uh, for the project. Um, since that time, um, there has been some changes and some impacts to that project because of the NIM two deadline. Uh, it did create an abundance of applications and has impacted the ability of, uh, the city to apply and obtain funding through that, uh, through that loan program. Um, it's still an option. It just may not be as viable, um, if the city decided to continue on that path. Uh, we would wait till June or December of two thousand and twenty-four to obtain that funding. Um, so I do have representatives from SiteLogic here today, uh, to kind of talk about the initial, uh, proposal as well as the new proposal. Um, city has also worked with the Oppenheimer Group to discuss some possible financing options for, uh, that project. Um, we have run some of the, uh, list preliminary numbers, uh, to make sure that the program is still viable. Um, but they can talk a little bit more about that process and, and give a presentation about what that would look like if council chose to, to follow that path. Um, so with that, I'll pass it over to Jessica Ritter with, uh, SiteLogic.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the finance committee. Jessica Ritter here with SiteLogic. Good to see you all again. We've brought our president of our West Division, Mr. John Gagen, here as well. Um, as Daniel mentioned, there has been some changes. Um, I know the members of the council that are on the finance committee are aware of these changes, uh, but the rest of you may not be. So the one percent loan program is a state-funded program, so through the California Energy Commission. We've been using this program for the past ten years without issue. This is the first time there's been an issue. Uh, so we have pivoted, worked with city staff to pivot on an additional financing option for council to consider. Uh, we've brought the Oppenheimer Group to explain, um, the ins and outs of that type of program, financing program. Uh, the metrics of the project still look fairly good. Of course, they don't look as good as when you're borrowing one percent money, and that's just a fact. There's no way to get around that. Um, interest rates right now are hovering around four point eight five. Those are the numbers that Oppenheimer Group is giving us. So that's a four point eight five percent interest over the life of the financing term. Um, do we have the cash flows in the presentation that we can? Excellent, thank you. So which one is this? Okay, so the one we're looking at here is the one you guys might notice and be familiarized with. This is the original ECA loan cash flow. Looks great. No negative years in your annual net savings. Um, if you want to scroll down to the inputs at the bottom, please. All right, so that project costs three point four eight seven. Uh, annual savings has not changed based on different types of financing methodologies. Um, except now, we're looking at, if you can scroll to the second cash flow, please, yep. So the tax-exempt municipal lease, uh, project cost has gone down. We'll discuss that in a minute. Um, but your, uh, Inflation Reduction Act contribution through the federal government has remained steady. Um, except you are paying a higher amount of interest over the life of the project now. Um, if you want to scroll up just a skid. Okay, so I want to take your attention to the annual net savings column. Just scroll up just a tiny bit, yep. So the first blue column there, annual net savings, you will see that there are some negatives in the first few years. This is not detrimental to the viability of the project, but of course, it's not one percent loan money, right? Uh, this is how a lot of projects are actually funded. Not every customer qualifies, um, or wants to pursue an ECA loan. Um, so this is what a lot of other cities are, and counties are dealing with now, that ECA loan is no longer an option, at least for two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we were asked by the finance committee, what could SiteLogic do to help ease the financial burden on the city, um, in regards to the new financing option? So the leadership in our company got together. We were able to reduce the first five years' cost of operation and maintenance to the city to nothing. Um, so we're essentially giving you operation and maintenance for the first five years at no cost, and we were able to drop fifty thousand dollars off the base project cost. We know that does not make up for the additional cost of this project due to the interest rate increase, uh, but it's what we can do. Uh, we definitely have loved working with the city thus far, with city staff and with council. Um, we hope that council wants to move forward with this project. We've brought Oppenheimer Group with us to explain how that process will work going forward. Um, but before we go to them, I would, I'm here to answer any questions from the council.
Questions from council?
What's, what's the return on investment at the one percent versus now?
So.
How many years are we looking at?
Yeah, good question. So it's actually not that big of a difference. So to calculate a simple payback, we take that total project cost. We subtract out that IRA incentives, so the eight hundred and seventy-six, and then we divide that by the annual savings. So under the ECA loan, it was a thirteen point five-year payback. And under the tax-exempt lease option, it's a thirteen point seven-year payback. So the simple payback didn't change very much. Um, so it, it's a very viable project, but you are paying more in interest rate over the life of the program, and that's something that we can't avoid. Any other questions?
Any questions from council? Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so one of the reasons why staff continues to kind of push for this project, um, we have, have periodic meetings with PG&E, um, but the rates do continue to increase. Um, so even with the additional cost, uh, staff feels that this still is a viable project, um, that will, uh, continue to give savings uh, based on the continuing trends of, of increased, uh, electrical rates. Um, but with that, I did have, uh, staff members from Oppenheimer to kind of talk a little bit about how, uh, this finding, financing piece, um, would work, uh, if staff, or if, uh, council chooses to proceed in this method. Um, cause it would be the recommendation of the city, of the, of staff, um, for city council to, uh, authorize the Oppenheimer Group to, to look at the terms and look at financing options and bring them back to the city for, for approval. So with that, I'll, I'll pass it over to the Oppenheimer Group.
That's great, thank you. Uh, Mayor, members of the council, I'm Nikki Tallman. I'm with Oppenheimer. And, um, we finance public projects throughout the state. Uh, we work a lot in the Central Valley, and, uh, we have clients from Porterville all the way up to Lathrop. Um, we work with Sanger, Reedley, Fowler, Selma, um, just to name a few in the area. And we worked with the city in two thousand and fifteen on a refunding of, um, uh, we called it a mixed bag of debt at that time, and we worked on refunding the lease revenue bonds for the fire station back in two thousand and fifteen, and we've stayed in touch with the city and analyzed the debt for other refunding opportunities, um, or project finance since then. Um, so Michael Garcia and I are here to go through the PowerPoint and explain some options to you for financing in the capital marketplace. I'm gonna let Michael introduce himself and start through the presentation, and then I'll take up on the backend.
Great. Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, uh, my name is Michael Garcia. I'm an associate at Oppenheimer. I've been working here a little over four years now. Um, before that, I, I worked in commercial banking. Today, I'm going to go over different financing options for the city's solar project. So here is a table of contents. Um, we'll just kind of briefly touch on these, and then I'll, we'll start working through the slides. Um, so first, we're gonna provide a market update. Um, next, we'll go over the financing process and options available to the city. Um, following that, we'll go forward with showing some preliminary, um, numerical analysis, um, in terms of, you know, final, um, loan, loan sizes and debt service, expected debt service amounts. And lastly, should the city decide to move forward, we'll go over what a preliminary financing schedule would look like. So here, we wanted to provide a market update just because that ultimately, the interest rate that's secured for this financing will be dependent on market conditions at that time. Um, and as you can see in this chart, um, going back to August of last year, interest rates have been trending upwards in the municipal market. Um, over the last thirty days, we've seen interest rates rise about thirty basis points. And, you know, a lot of this volatility, um, is really down to two things. One, inflation, which I'm sure everyone's seen in the news, and, and two, um, the Federal Reserve and, and actions that they're taking at their FOMC meetings. Um, inflation has been moderating lately. Um, the next big inflation report is due out on September thirteenth of next week. Um, that'll be the August CPI report. Um, that report will be, um, heavily scrutinized by the Federal Reserve at their next meeting on September nineteenth. Um, so depending on, on how that report comes in, um, you know, that'll heavily influence whether or not the Fed decides to raise rates or not. Um, right now, there, i- i- most people think they won't raise them, but, you know, we'll see, we'll see what that report says next week. So here, we wanted to discuss a little bit about, um, the method of securing the financing, um, for the city. Um, here, we're looking at performing a direct placement. Um, so this type of process involves a placement agent, which is ourselves, placing the financing directly with an institutional investor, um, or a bank, really, in this case. Um, and this differs in many ways from a public bond sale. So with a public bond sale, you'd have a bond rating, you'd have, uh, POS or prospectus. Um, with this type of financing, we have none of those things. Um, we also, you know, there's no due diligence required on your part. It's, it's on the part of the bank. Um, so it's a much simpler process, faster process, um, reduced cost of issuance compared to a public bond sale, um, and, and requires less sap time. So this is kind of a, the typical financing process for these, um, smaller type issuances. So here, we just wanted to show, um, some recent examples of solar financings we've done over the past couple months. Um, all of these projects are really similar to the one being discussed here, all solar financings, um, and of, of similar sizes, um, you know, ranging from Lamont, or sorry, West Side, Wreckin Park District. That deal was about two point seven million, up to this upcoming deal, um, we hope to close soon with Arvin Community Services District, about seven point three million. And one thing we wanted to highlight here is the term and structures. Um, so as you can see, um, some of these go up to twenty years, and we have a couple that are actually fifteen-year terms with twenty-year amortizations, meaning the payments are structured as if it's a twenty-year loan. Um, but in year fifteen, um, the rate either resets or the loan is refinanced, and that's, that's just a function of the structure. Um, those are equipment lease deals where, um, where the equipment itself is a security for the financing, where some of these other type structures are a little bit different, and Nikki will touch on that. Uh, but we just wanted to demonstrate that this is, you know, it's a real common financing. Um, it's, it's, it's something that we see, you know, it's pretty standard. Um, so I just wanted to make that point. And now I think I'll pass it on to Nikki.
Um. Okay. Um, so just to expand a little bit on the structure, there are really three ways that you can structure a financing like this. Um, one is an equipment lease. It's the most simple. Uh, the equipment, like Michael said, is the security for the financing. Um, some investors will go a full twenty years on an equipment lease, but most will do a twenty-year amortization with a fifteen-year term. Um, in this case, the general fund is the source of repayment, um, and there's a covenant to include the payment in the annual budget. Uh, the second type is a real property lease. Um, here, instead of the equipment being the subject of the lease, a real property is, like a city hall or a fire station or a police station, an essential asset of the city. So you have to tie up another asset to enter into the financing. Um, the benefit is that some investors could, uh, provide a lower interest rate because they think the collateral is more secure. But we're fine, we found, and in the next slide, we'll go over the, um, feedback, but we found from investors that that's not the case in this market. So, but we, but we do look at that, um, as a real property lease, and typically twenty years is no problem for a real property lease. Um, with an installment sale agreement, we see this structure with a water or wastewater project where the, um, rate payers pay back the debt service from the water rates or the wastewater rates. Here, there's a small component of, um, utility at the wells, but most of it is general fund. So we just, we just canvassed investors, um, kind of in, to get some general terms. Um, we looked at an equipment lease. Um, the financing amount is approximately three point three million. Um, we assumed for this analysis capitalized interest for eighteen months, which means we'd pre-fund interest for the eighteen-month period until the project got up and running, and the savings would pay for the debt service. And then we estimated cost of issuance, maybe a little bit on the high side, but we wanted to round up, um, to total about eighty thousand. The interest rate feedback that we were getting was between four eighty, um, four eighty-five. So we used a four eighty-five rate in the analysis. You can see for the equipment lease, the average fiscal year debt service is about two hundred and seventy-two thousand. So that would be the payment for this loan, estimated. Uh, total debt service would be about five point, let's call it five point three million. Um, we also spoke to investors about a real property lease. The interest rate there was a little bit higher. So the banks that typically or historically have liked real property leases, we saw them increase their interest rates more quickly than the investors that liked equipment leases. Sounds a little bit interesting to us over the summer. Um, but the rate was a little bit higher, a five point oh five percent, and you can see the cost is a little bit higher because we do need to secure title insurance. Um, the average fiscal year debt service under that structure is about two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So a little bit higher for the real property lease. Um, the installment sale agreement doesn't work well here because the water component is a small component over the overall. Okay, um, we put together an estimate of financing schedule if the council would like to move forward with financing the project in this manner. Um, we're here tonight, um, at the city council meeting on the sixth. And if we're directed to move forward, then tomorrow, we begin soliciting feedback from investors. We'd go to the market, um, and request term sheets from the banks to collect the interest rates, what structure they prefer, and what's the maximum term, fifteen years, twenty years, or a twenty-year amort, with a fifteen-year term. Um, and then we would select the investor, uh, on the fifteenth, prior to the Fed meeting, uh, which occurs the following week on the nineteenth, and we would begin drafting the legal documents. There would be some time for comment on the legal documents, and then we'd bring it back to council on October fourth. So at that time, we would know the exact interest rate, the terms, and the council, um, could approve the transaction or not. But we have to really get out to the market in order to find out what the, what the interest rate could be. Most of the banks will allow for a thirty, forty-five, sixty-day rate lock. Um, we'll find that out as well. And so the rate can be locked while we process the paperwork. And then we could close the middle of October. And that wraps our presentation on the financing, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Do you need some specific authorization for us? If we're gonna lock rates, uh, prior to the Fed, would you need us to authorize the city manager to sign for that?
Yes, typically, um, if, with a, if you authorize the city manager or staff to review the proposals, maybe we get three or four proposals from banks, we provide a summary to staff, um, have a call and go over the summary, and then, um, staff could direct us to work with one lender. Um, the lenders work in good faith, um, so there's no cancellation fee. Um, so if, between selection of a lender and coming back to council or closing, it, the transaction. So if between selection of a lender and coming back to council or closing, the transaction doesn't close, there's no broken fee for the bank, or really for any of the financing team members.
So if we, if we decide to move forward with that, and then we have our rate locked, I think we're all anticipating the Fed not doing us any favors on the, on the rates, so we'll be locked in prior to that, but if for some reason, something happens crazy at the Fed level, and rates drop or anything like that, can we walk out of that initial lock? And then look at it again at the lower rate, or is there a penalty for that?
There's no penalty for that. The banks may not rebid, knowing that in good faith, they bid, and you accepted it, and then you backed out. So we wouldn't recommend that. Just like if the rates go up, the bank is gonna hold to their term sheet and keep the rate for you.
Any other questions? I have a question. Did you say that the investors get to choose what structure?
No, the investor will propose, we'll, we'll ask them for an equipment lease, what's the longest term? So they may come back with, we'll do an equipment lease at X rate for fifteen years, or we'll do an equipment lease with a twenty-year amort fifteen-year term at X rate. So they'll provide us with the options that they can support, or they can secure the financing with, and then it's up to staff and council to, to select the one that, that you want.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the public on this agenda item? Okay. Thank you.
Let's real fast, I have one. Ms. Tolman, no matter, if we, if we do this option of financing, we can go through, and forgive me, Ms. Ritter and SiteLogix, we can, we could farm this out to whoever, or is this, this financing agreement locked to using SiteLogic?
This financing agreement would be locked to the project, but the bank will wanna know who, who's doing the project, and that the commitment is there for the project. So in that respect, it's locked to SiteLogic. If you decide not to move forward, and a year goes by, and you look to restart the project, then you could do financing for the project, whatever the project is at that time. So in essence, the financing now today is locked to SiteLogic. In that, the project is locked to SiteLogic.
Okay, so just from my perspective, at the one percent, I mean, it was a super no-brainer, right? But, and I appreciate the hundred and fifty thousand that you guys have, you know, graciously allocated as a rebate, but we're looking at a lot of money on an additional three-plus percent in interest. And it makes a huge difference when you look at, okay, we're trying to be fiscally responsible, okay, the, the solar makes sense to me long-term. But now I'm at the point where I'm like, well, wait a minute, the hundred and fifty thousand's great, but maybe Pickett Solar or somebody else can do two hundred and fifty thousand, save us some money, because now we're paying a lot of money in interest. So I appreciate what the Finance Committee did in working with you to adjust that, but I just asked that if we go forward with this, is there anything else that SiteLogix can help make this more palatable than it is, is now? Because it's not as palatable as it once was.
I'm happy to answer that question. So we came to the city with our best and final, this is what we can do, knowing full well that, you know, the CEC running out of funding was not something that was necessarily our doing, right? We could have come in before and, and said, hey, this is one option. Know that it, something might happen to it, and then this is the secondary option. We could have done that from the beginning, and then it wouldn't have been such a shock to council at the, at the end of the day. But, but at the end of the day, for us, you know, we, we dipped into our own margins, we dipped into our own to give the city some reprieve financially. There's nothing more than we can do to that. We, we didn't come here to try to negotiate with you guys, we came to you with our best and final. As far as moving forward with the financing, and, and what Nikki was mentioning, was that the reason that this financing is locked to SiteLogic is because the bank will need to know that you're under contract with somebody to do the work before they're going to give you a loan for anything. So, and, and I don't know if you wanna discuss it with staff or, or Public Works, but I do know from experience, the process of going out, finding a new contractor to re-engineer the project, to redesign everything, to get it to the point of contract, would be a very difficult task to do within the financing timeline that's been provided today. Not to say that the city couldn't delay this project another six or eight months, and, and have all the time in the world to farm it out to other ESCOs. But we hope that we've done a good job thus far in our engineering and our project development. Aside from this financing piece, you know, we have a plethora of fabulous references, even in your very own city with your very own school district. So we would hope that the city of Kingsburg would wanna keep relationship with SiteLogic. But to answer your question, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was the best that we could do.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council?
I have a question. So the NEM two point O applications have been approved. That, how soon do we have to act on that? Is that like a forever thing? Is it, there are time limits?
No, so, so there is a time limit. So you do have, I believe it's three years from twenty twenty-three, what was it, it was like April that they were due, so you have to have everything connected and built by, by twenty twenty-six before it's all done. So there is additional constraints with ordering materials and getting construction out to bid, and getting all of that secured, so there, there is a time crunch.
I can speak to this a little bit from the Finance Committee, just for background. So we were initially told, hey, it's gonna go from three point four to three point seven seven, best-case scenario. We were furious, honestly. And I think that we, as professional as we could, expressed that to SiteLogic. And we talked about farming it out to bid for other places. We confirmed that our NEM applications are good, even if we go somewhere else. And we told SiteLogic that we felt like their initial proposal ended up being an untruthful proposal. You know, not, not necessarily at their fault, but it still ended up being not what was proposed to us. And we were upset about that. And I think that as time went on, I looked into some more stuff about it, and when we came back to it, I think SiteLogic did come back to us. That hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they're writing off is what we were asking them to make it even remotely palatable for us. So that was kind of our ask at the finance level, to even consider bringing it to council, because there was a point when we weren't even gonna bring it to council. You know, we're not locked into timelines, there's a little bit of a pressure, as there always has been with this project, which is a huge frustration of mine, is everything is last-minute, make a decision right now. But I, I will say, I think SiteLogic did what they could. Now, whether or not that's agreeable by council, that's your choice, but that hundred and fifty thousand dollars is as close to the middle as I think they could meet us for this, if they're gonna still be the project. If we go with a different solar company, we talk to Public Works and staffs, that was my specific question, is how much extra work are we talking to go back out to bid? And it's pretty substantial. It's a pretty substantial amount of work.
It, it's a couple of months to go out to each project, analyze the bills, look at the existing infrastructure, and they may not build it or recommend the same project or same setup that SiteLogic has. So it is, it is a lot of work to get it to where we were at when we were first proposing the project. Not undoable, but definitely a big load of work.
So I, I mean, ultimately, it's up to council, but I think that, those were weighing factors when we decided to bring it back with these financing options to council. And, you know, the Oppenheimer Group did a great job of seeking these things out, and I think finance was really leaning towards doing the equipment lease option for a few different reasons. Those specifically that I wrote down is it, it's gonna save a lot of staff time. We're not gonna be putting up any of our assets here. We're gonna be using the equipment that we're purchasing as our asset that we're borrowing against. It's general fund-backed, which doesn't sound great, but as opposed to it being a, a water revenue fund, which is not really applicable to this. And it's the lowest interest rate at this point. So those were, those were our reasons when we brought it back to you guys, that was kind of the direction. Councilmember Smith, I think, if you wanna speak to anything, anything that's contradictory to that.
Daniel, at well sixteen, have we finalized the design at well sixteen?
So not completely final, but we do have some renderings that we can show.
And, and, and in a follow-up question to that would be, the different designs and renderings, is there a huge financial discrepancy between the two or three, whatever it is?
No, I, I think we found some really good options, so, I mean, just kind of, this is how it would look like if you're standing on Skansen, looking south. Like I said, we can, can I control it through here? The arrows? Oh, yeah. So this is, this is basically what it would look like. I know it's a little hard to see, but I'm gonna go ahead and just kind of point. So here, we've added additional landscaping along the middle fence, which, as you can see, will kind of hide the, the panels. I'll, I'll kind of show what was, that's what it would look like without the panels, and then that's with the panels there. So adding additional landscaping both in the middle fence, and then also adding some on Skansen, we think will, will kind of satisfy the visuals at, at that location. So this, this one, you can, you can barely even see across the way, and that's just adding a couple bushes there.
So we're still gonna, I'm gonna send that out to quite a few people that live in that area, especially those that were concerned with, I have everybody that showed up, I'm gonna email them that to get feedback, because at least for tonight's thing, we're in no ways even saying that we're gonna put panels there.
Yes.
It's the overall project possibly to include that, so I think that's a separate conversation to have in the future.
Definitely.
But we haven't finalized that, I just don't want people to hear that and think that that's what, in fact, we're doing tonight, because we're not.
Definitely, yeah, so today, like I said, the, the, what we're, what staff's looking for, and the recommendation we're making is to authorize the Oppenheimer Group to solicit those term sheets. I mean, obviously, that kicks off a, a quick timeline, but like I said, I think it's one that, that's important for the viability of the project.
I still have an issue that we've had since like July twenty seventeen, I think, is when NEM two point O came out, and it's such a rush. I still have an issue with us doing our due diligence with money, with interest rate in a rush. And I'm feeling it again tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, one of the other conversations, you know, that we had at the Finance Committee, and I think, you know, some of the challenges, I, I appreciate the, sort of the feeling that you guys are in with regards to sort of the timing of this, right? So the CPUC, you know, made their decision, that's out of our hands, gave everybody four-ish months to decide whether or not they were gonna do that, so, you know, that's, you know, part of the difficulty there. And then the other challenge that we have, sort of to Councilmember Silva's comment that we talked about, was, hey, do we, do we take this and go talk to another company? And I think the challenge there is, is that the timing that you're facing is what the Fed will do. So it's possible that someone like Pickett or someone could come back and potentially say, yes, we could do this for cheaper than what they've offered, you know, they'd have to get under the hundred and fifty that they've, that they've given back, but, you know, twenty basis points is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars difference, you know, of the overall project cost. So if the Fed raises it twenty-five basis points, it's gonna be, you know, a hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars more. So now you're trying to find, that savings has to be three hundred thousand dollars to match what we have here, right? And if it takes a couple of months, and the Fed meets in September, and they raise it, and then they meet again, and they raise it, so, so those are the time constraints that are challenges to the vi, the financial viability for the entire project. And so I think the hard part is, you're right, it's, it's what was presented originally, but if you remove that, and, you know, the one percent was never on the table, I mean, because even if we go with Pickett or somebody else, the, we're gonna have to borrow, right? It's going to be what the market conditions are, what the interest rate is, because the ECO loan isn't tied to what vendor we use, it's tied to what's available. And so, you know, still long-term, I mean, Daniel can talk, we, we're talking earlier this week, I think PG&E is looking to raise rates thirty-one percent this year, so that's this year. So it's hard, and it's a lot of money, but, you know, our recommendation is what it is, because we do think it makes sense financially for the long term.
SiteLogic also has our elementary school district, correct? What's their percentage?
Their percentage of interest rate? I actually don't know the answer to that question. I don't, I don't know the exact answer to that question. My colleague Chris Bristow does K through twelve projects in the Central Valley, and I focus primarily on cities, counties, and special districts, so I don't have that answer for you.
CM listed on Oppenheimer's list.
No, actually, Oppenheimer, that, the list that they showed was their most recent projects that they financed. And, and as a matter of fact, three of those four projects are with SiteLogic. But, so, but they wanted to show you real-time. The Kingsburg Elementary Charter project was some time ago. But also, the difference between funding K-12 projects and funding local government projects is that there's funding for K-12 projects. A lot of times, it's no-cost money, either a zero percent loan from the California Energy Commission, or ESER funds, or Prop thirty-nine funds. So there's a lot of grant opportunities for schools, and we don't see that in local governments, yeah, so.
Any other questions or comments for Daniel, or Oppenheimer Group, or SiteLogic? I think in the long run, this is a good project, it's just, it's gonna cost us a little more. And if we approve Oppenheimer to, to solicit term sheets, we can always, if we don't like them, we can always vote no, right? Not locked, yeah.
Correct from wrong group. We're in no financial liability at that point, correct? We could even still walk away from the entire SiteLogic project if need be. Obviously, there's a potential thirty thousand dollar penalty, but I bet you'd waive it if we needed to. I'm gonna put you on the spot for that. You don't have, don't, you don't answer it, or I'm not gonna let you through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So in front of us, we have, do we, staff recommends that we authorize the Oppenheimer Group to solicit the term sheets on behalf of the city. Can I get a motion?
I'll, I'll make that, I'll make that motion. To at least, and just to be clear, what we're soliciting is, we're, we're just saying, go out and get, get our financing locked in so that we have that as an option. That's, that's what we're doing today.
I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Motion passes three to two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have six point three. Park naming proposal for West Star Phase One and Phase Three. Staff report by the naming director, naming service director, Adam Castaneda. Presentation by Adam Castaneda, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So tonight, I bring to you some naming opportunities for some of the city parks. So in August of two thousand and twenty-one, the City Council approved a park facility naming policy, establishing that the City Council has authority over the naming of park assets pursuant to the prior evaluation and recommendation of the city manager and city staff. Under the newly-approved naming policy, city staff receives and evaluates proposals for formally-named or renaming new park assets, recreation facilities, under the city's jurisdiction. The new policy outlines criteria and guidelines. Uh, the new policy outlines criteria and guidelines that must be followed before staff gives consideration or brings it to council for approval. Um, on tonight's staff report, there was the list, a short list of the criteria and guidelines for evaluating park assets and naming proposals. Um, in July of this past year, city staff went ahead and published an online survey seeking community input on the potential naming of one of the newest city parks in Kingsburg, located north of Solig Avenue and east of Eighteenth Avenue. Um, this park is part of Phase Three of West Star Construction's housing development. Um, and in addition, because it is West Star, um, we do, we did realize there is an additional park from Phase One um, in their Phase One development, um, that also hasn't received an official name yet. Um, so over, over the survey process, uh, we received over a hundred and forty online responses with recommendations on proposed names. Um, and the top ten were narrowed, narrowed down just based on the city's naming policy that was adopted in two thousand and twenty-one um, after reviewal from the Community Services Commission and city staff. Um, and so it's our intent tonight to go ahead and use that top ten list um, to come up or choose and have council select a name for these, for these parks. Um, so after initial review by the Community Services Commission, city staff is confident that the list of names meets all required criteria and guidelines for each of the locations. Um, the list above does contain names associated with families located in Kingsburg. But these names have been proposed for the respective parks based on the prior ownership of the land in which the park is currently located. Uh, currently the city only has one park with the name of Kingsburg Family, Athwell. Um, and that park was dedicated to the city in two thousand and six, um, as the property was donated to the city in memory of Jesse Athwell. Uh, the land West Star Construction has set aside for Phase Ones and Phase Threes was acquired, was acquired by the city as part of the conditions of approval for the development, including the amenities within. Um, and so there's been no outside donations or contributions for those parklands as, as of today. Um, and so on the staff report, again, you have the list, uh, top ten for each of the phases. Um, I think if you scroll down to the, the pictures or the, so this is the full policy and then the next one uh, just kind of gives you a rough estimate or idea of where the parks are located. This is Phase One, uh, this park is already established and is there. Um, and then below it is Phase Three, um, and that's currently being developed. So, um, with that, Mike concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, um, but we hope we can get some names selected for today and, and go forward, so.
Park ones across from the models, it's the pickleball park?
Correct.
Just for clarity, Alex, this might be a question for you or Adam, I don't know, but just for clarity, like, so the park in Phase One that was part of West Star Construction, they could have named that park and then just gave it to the, donated that property to the city? Or they're not allowed to name parks?
Uh, so if they wanted to donate the amenities and the land, then we would have had that conversation. But essentially every developer is required to pay impact fees to the city. And so, um, if they don't develop green space, then they pay an impact fee. And if they do develop, uh, green space, then we use a calculation of what the impact fee would have been and how much they've spent on those improvements. Um, so it, it kind of depends, but, you know, in general, no, developers are not, um, they don't donate it or they don't name it. They might put their own sort of names on it, but ultimately the decision is the city's or ours to decide that. And that's in line with our naming policy.
And to add to that, historically, parks are given additional names either during, during the development process. Um, so we do have, like, the Summerlin Park doesn't have an official name, but it's using the name of the development that it was created in. Um, we did some research on Erling Park Basin, the same, same was there. There's no actual documentation that we can come up with that, that, that gives that was named after a certain family or, or just more so location or streets and stuff like that, so.
Any other questions or comments from council? Comment?
No, I want to hear from.
Yeah, I know. Do you have anybody in our council chamber that would like to, uh, comment on this agenda item? Have anybody here that would like to comment on this agenda item?
I'm Gary Nelson. I've been a resident my full life. I'm born in the sanitarium on Kingsburg. Uh, good evening, mayor, council and staff. I felt very sincere about this, of what my parents have done. And it's kind of hard at times to talk about your parents, but I thought of a different way. I knew what my parents did in this community. They loved Kingsburg. They really truly did. And so I, I reached out and the way I did it was, I thought, you know, I'm going to find, and I know a lot of you are new to the community. You know, I, I'm almost seventy, so it's been a long time I've been here. But a lot of people don't know my parents because they have deceased, you know, in the past. So I went out and I wrote, that's where the letters that are addressing my parents are coming from them, of what they saw of them. And also some of their, uh, parents are deceased, but they do know, uh, what the parents did. If you look back in the, in the beginning, my folks bought that land to be in the country. Stroud was the road. That's all the farther it went out. And they wanted to be in the country and they truly thought that was the country. My grandparents lived next to the south of that place, which is now the Nelson Estates. But that's all the farther, it doesn't have any parks or anything. Just a little bit about my two parents. My dad was the worker. He was a farmer. He dropped down in eighth grade and was told by his parents that he'd have to go to work. He was accused of something, he said he didn't do it. He went to work and he developed what he has in his time. And he was a hardworking person. What did he do for the community? Goes back in the days when Gordon Satterberg was the mayor for a long time. My parents were real close to the Satterbergs, the Kinsmans, um, the Smiths and the rest. They did so many community projects in this community. When Mayor Satterberg would say to do something, and I was the little tadpole, I would go along with him. You know, it was before the Swedish Festival and they wanted to get the train depot painted on the side of the rails. We were out there painting till midnight, it seemed like. It was dark, still painting the place. Then my dad was also noted, he wasn't the community minded and the person of being in service groups. His community service was his wrestling. If you're not aware, that was all built by hand by him over several years. It's been going for over sixty years and it's still there. You ask people where I live, you know that one with the Santa Claus out there? They, oh, yeah. That was his love was to the community, was to give back in that way. My mom was the other way. And he, he was born and raised in Kingsburg his whole life. My mom came later in life. She was a, um, a teacher at Kingsburg High School and she was a tennis coach. She had the championship tennis coach in Kingsburg. She got involved in the church. If we all know, our churches and our community are hand in hand. That developed her into the Tuesday Club. It developed into, uh, the, uh, the historical park. It developed into, um, just various, the Four Age. She was really active in that. And, um, then my mom over all the years was nominated to be Fresno County Citizen of the Year. And that was accumulation of all her things. But I have to credit my dad because my dad was the one that always went behind. He brought the equipment in. He always did that. He didn't need to be the line light. My mom didn't want to be the line light. She just wanted to see things get done. But it had to be somebody to spearhead and then she got my dad to be involved in those things. I feel that that land has been in our family for a, a long time. They bought one piece and then they bought the other. They didn't like the house on the side. I'm just telling a little story, you know, they bought small acreage on it. They had it across the street and then they, they bought the land, but they didn't like the house. House didn't, didn't sit there speed. So they kept looking and, and it was a Neil Van Denne, it was a contractor who built across the street. And, um, he showed them how to, to develop that. Within, uh, when I was five was when I wanted a Christmas scene. They saw it down at Hastings Ranch and slowly but surely every year he started putting things out. To the Santa Claus going from a, a uniform that you could buy to one that was so large that you had to construct the whole thing. The park would be a resemblance of my parents and their contribution to Kingsburg. I know there was a question about calling it Nelson Park. And I have no problem with it being changed off of that a little bit in the sense that they thought I would be involved in that and I'm not deceased. I don't have any problem with the name being changed a little bit and called Franklin and Elizabeth Nelson. That steers it right directly to them. That's what I was after in the beginning, um, just didn't catch that at the period of time there. Um, I look around the town and I see so many things, uh, a group of pyramids that were here in the beginning and how much they did and my folks were definitely involved in a lot of those projects. My mom wanted to see the best for this town. She didn't want to see the, the things that, um, little towns can talk about. My mom was the kind that would go right to the source. It was the pastor or wherever and to straighten it out. She says, I don't want to talk to people, they're going to just talk. I want things corrected. I want the betterment for this town. I'm proud of this town and I want it to continue to be like that. Thank you. Is there any questions? I'm not sure how I've addressed this. I had to go ahead and go on my own with the letters and that's why I addressed, and I took different phases all the way around the globe.
I have a question.
Yes.
So the bigger of the two parks is Phase Three, correct? But you're asking on Phase One?
I, I am being very, very open to either. That's why when I put it down is Phase One or Phase Three. I think that's the decision of a council to make that decision.
I have to clarify that really quick, so the, the way that it's written out for the top ten, um, because it's prior land ownership. Um, and so it was Herbert and I forget her first name, Satterberg Olsen that owned the property that's on Phase Three, not Nelson. So that's why it, we cut it.
That's why you put him, okay. I thought it was, you know, pickleball's kind of like tennis and.
Well, and also to educate you, you know, as the new council, the Olsen's had it for about eight years, nine years. It truly was Ager Palm. Ager Palm had an old house and a barn. The barn's just next door down there, was reconstructed. That was probably eighty, ninety years. His grandparents had it. He was a bachelor and he had the land after it. It was about an eight period, uh, year period there, then it was sold to, to Creamclaw. So you got an education, they, they keep thinking the Olsen, it really truly wasn't Olsen for a long period of time. My folks have had the land for, you know, all their life. And I still, to this day, until I could see that the city was growing, it wasn't at Stroud any longer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anybody else here for public comment tonight?
I'll make it quick.
I was going to say West Star, come on.
Sandra Stats, West Star Construction, one three eight three seven, South Settaker, Kingsburg, California. Um, just to reiterate, I know the contribution that both Franklin and Elizabeth had made to the city of Kingsburg. I didn't know Franklin personally, I knew Elizabeth quite well. So the strength that that woman gave us is impeccable and is prideful for the city of Kingsburg. As West Star Construction, and it's great to know that actually we owned that property longer than Holly and Louis owned that property. So I don't see Creamclaw Park on there. But no, we are not like that and I appreciate the staff assisting us in all our projects that we have. And we are excited about more parks, more green space area. And what Alex said, and I have to give you a hard time on this, um, we don't donate. We put blood, sweat and tears in those projects and in those parks. And the joy that we get from seeing our, our neighbors and everything going to those parks, it's, it's great. How we've evolved, the pickleball courts, I mean, it's a, it's fantastic. Um, back to Nelson, um, I've had the opportunity to live in Kingsburg all my life. So families are very, very important. So when you have Satterbergs, when you have Nelsons, when you have Olsen's, when you have Hendersons, um, Dave Peters, I mean, there's just a lot of great things that have happened for the city of Kingsburg. So when we have an opportunity to honor certain families that have made such an impact, it's, it's truly an opportunity for all of us. And some history for our children, for our, the futures that going forward and the role models that we can actually pin on. Um, there's many things we can do with benches and things like that also, but, um, Mr. Creamclaw did write a letter in, um, recommendation on Nelson Park for Phase One, so appreciate your, all your hard work.
Question, question, question.
A question, sorry.
West Stars or your vote on Phase Three list?
Oh, that's a tough one.
Is there anybody else here who wants on Phase Three?
Um, actually, the one that kind of stood out was kind of cool, uh, was Viking Park, only because I'm a Viking. Um, but there was Liberty Park was a very nice, nice one. Sure, can I have top three? And, and nothing against Dollar Horse Park, but I think that's more of a city downtown kind of regiment. Um, geez, Freedom and, and Liberty are probably my two top choices. So that's it.
Sorry.
I hope I answered that question. Any, anything else?
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you, Sandra.
And I can help with those handicap ramps too.
All right. Any other additional questions from council? Anybody else here from the public want to comment on this agenda item? No, okay. So we have a decision to make.
Do you want, do we do comment, I mean, council comment? Can we do that real quick? Because I have a few things to say. I mean, I appreciate Gary coming down here and I, I appreciate the letters and Sandra's right. I mean, West Star did write a letter in support. And there's even a handwritten letter, which was, you know, amazing. And so although I didn't know Gary's, you know, parents, um, I think it is what this community is about is, you know, showcasing and, and saying, hey, listen, we appreciate the contributions that people have made. And I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I appreciate your parents, Gary, even though I didn't know them. And I appreciate you for coming and going through the effort because I feel that you're passionate about this. And, um, I don't look at it as they're deceased and you're here and Nelson Park is some type of conflict. I mean, if we wanted to name it Franklin and Elizabeth, I suppose that's what we could do. But I am fully in support of the Nelson Park name. I think the slippery slope that we can get into is, there's a lot of great families, right? And Phase Three has got some great family names on there. And then now we get into a position of, well, which family was greater than the next family? And I don't want to get into that, but since there is no conflict on Phase One, I fully support the Nelson Park name. But that's just me, so that's all I had.
Thank you, Dave.
Uh, I guess I could go. So I, I would support the Nelson Park as Nelson Park. Not, not for any real reason other than I didn't know your parents, but I think that your parents and that name is a representation of a connection with the past. I know we look at our town's values and we have a lot of pride in our history. And looking even further back, well before your parents, nineteen oh eight, the first mayor's last name was Nelson. So that's important for me too, because it's not, it's not just about your parents, it's not just about you. It's about a name associated with the town and for. It's about a name associated with the town. And for me, it's just the connection to the past that's appealing to me. I think it's a way for us to remember the past. So I would, I, I support Nelson as, as a singular name, because I think it represents more. Um, and, and, and I, I like that. And I appreciate you coming down and I appreciate all of your uh, efforts getting the letters and everything.
I think our history and our like stories of our community are important and um, thank you for coming down and for the letters because we would have just seen a name on the list and not known that. Um, like phase three, we see names and we don't have all of those stories behind that to make the decision. And so um, I'm definitely in favor of the Nelson and not adding the other names or changing it. Also for phase one.
Well, I, I'm gonna agree. And I like the idea of Nelson. Instead of adding your parents' name, they did make a remarkable contribution to the community. And this is uh, and that's what the community is about is, you know, recognizing um, our history and looking at, uh, so I do, I do support naming it Nelson. And, and I'm gonna agree with Sandra on phase three and I'm just gonna throw out, I like Viking Park. So.
Yeah, I agree on uh, for phase one, Nelson Park also. I appreciate, you know, Gary coming in and giving us uh, some history of your parents. I remember as a little boy, driving by there thinking, oh yeah, there's Mr. Nelson up there. He's putting up the Christmas. You know, the Santa Claus and the reindeer and uh, Mrs. Claus and a lot of good memories, you know, as a young boy driving by there. Taking my kids by there when they were little and it was one of the, you know, staples of Kingsburg. It's been one of the staples of Kingsburg. That, that roof during Christmas time, no doubt. And I know your parents probably put a lot of hard work into that land, you know, on that land, farming it over the years. So I think it's very appropriate we name that part, name that area Nelson Park, definitely. And so I think we're all unanimous, gives staff direction that, Cam Avenue Eighteenth Park definitely should be Nelson Park. And then uh, phase three, Soul Lake Eighteenth Avenue. Do we name it tonight? Al, uh, Adam, you wanting us to name it tonight?
Yeah, I should have been on that because that's the Christmas corner, you know, I was like, I should have put that in there.
I don't know. What do you guys think?
I like Viking Park also. I mean, you know, I, I asked a few individuals like what they thought. And um, Viking Park was the first one that they came up with. So I, I'm in favor of Viking Park as well.
I also like Walkman because it means welcome.
Yeah. Is there, oh, can I get a little bit of clarity? I'm sorry. Sandra, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Is phase five, is there an additional park coming in phase five? So we could conceivably be doing this again in a few months?
Yeah, my first pick for, for phase three was Walkman, is welcome. And then I also liked Liberty. That's the two I liked. Excited when this one's written?
Yeah, I mean, they're all good. It's, I'm indifferent to it. There's no bad names. I think, I think that we named the important one, the connection with the past. And where we go from here is just whatever you choose, I'll support.
I, I'd make a motion to do Viking and Nelson, but.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there it is.
Just, just to be clear, since Sandra's here and gave me a hard time, they could still donate the park in phase five. And maybe consider naming rights. So, it's one option.
And a Viking ship?
Six point four Laurel Street Dog Park update report, Community Service Director Adam Castaneda.
Thank you. All right. Well, Mr. Mayor and members of council, um, feels like we were here just recently. Um, but um, seems like we're making some, some headway with the, the dog park project. Um, just an update tonight on the Kingsburg Dog Park renovation project funded by California Proposition, Proposition sixty-eight. Uh, and the city received one point two four four million uh, during the round four uh, application process from the state um, for the dog park. Um, and as of the date of this report, the project's final landscape design has been reviewed by the Community Services Commission. Um, and is ready for council review and approval. Uh, on August twenty-third, the Community Services Commission held its monthly meeting and publicly discussed the proposal, proposed landscape rendering, for the dog park, uh, which was included in tonight's packet. Uh, the landscape design um, is ready to be presented to council. Um, and it's their essential recommendation to move forward. Um, the architectural design firm that developed the renovation uh, plan did receive some comments that night from, from the community and from the commissioners. Um, uh, but these comments were um, minimal, um, which would include substituting some oleander bushes. And then looking into um, a block structural fence along the freeway side of, of the park. Um, and Community Services Commission, understanding that these comments would be taken into consideration, we're ready for the budgeting process. Um, and if the numbers work, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we'd include those. Um, so once the council has reviewed and deemed that no further action is required, to approve the proposed landscape design, uh, city staff will work with the city engineer to determine project cost and prepare the project for bid. Um, the Kingsburg Dog Park renovation project, um, again funded by Proposition sixty-eight, um, is making progress. Um, and the timeline was included in the report. Um, the grant funding period, we have until two thousand twenty-eight, but um, if everything goes well, two thousand twenty-four is what we're looking at, at project completion. So, um, and to ensure transparency, um, we, uh, city staff, uh, will come, will be coming back in late November. Um, just to do one final update and to seek approval from council. Um, just on the finalization of the project documents, um, and then getting it ready for bid. Um, and so with that, that's what I have to conclude. Can you go down to the, the rendering? Um, just to speak a little bit about it, and I, I know Dave Peters is here as well, if you have any technical questions. Um, but because it was through the state, there were certain amenities that we needed to make sure were included in the project. Um, so the commission uh, worked with um, Dave's office and the architecture uh, firm, just to make sure that everything was included. Um, it is, it is roughly a two acre park. Um, and so this, this essentially will include a walking path. Um, around the majority of it, around the park, um, decomposed granite, correct? Um, which would make it pretty much accessible um, for walking, um, wheelchairs and all that. Um, we do have a restroom facility, uh, similar to the one that we just put in Athwol. So it is a free, uh, free, uh, pre-fabricated, uh, structure to stall. Um, and also I have a, a dog pet washing station attached to it. Um, that was a request by the commission and to have it included. I have several shade structures throughout the section. Um, and I don't know if you can tell, but these darker colored areas are going to be synthetic turf, uh, designed for dog parks so that it's, it's easier for staff to maintain and, and just nicer year round. Um, landscaping wise, uh, the green obviously is the grass. Um, and we, there was a major discussion about the bottom of the basin. Um, it's gonna stay pretty much as it is. It was just open now. Um, still has to remain a ponding basin. Um, and so um, so yeah, with that, that's, that's all I have. If you have any additional questions, like I said, Dave Peters is here to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from council on Dog Park?
I have a couple like always, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, but how, how long is the walking path? It's like a mi- a mile, half a mile, walking? I mean, should there be benches? I guess is just, I'll just say it. Should there be benches? There are? Okay, cause I didn't see them in the design. And then the decomposed granite, so this might be more of a question for um, Daniel in Public Works. I mean, a lot of times the dogs run on that decomposed granite and it, it gets everywhere, right? Are, are we putting like some of that granite glue or, or that, that glue down to like hold the rock in place? Or is that just gonna be like um, like a maintenance nightmare for Daniel? Okay, all right. And then um, I know the plants, we talked about the plants before, like native species and stuff, but there's no like toxic plants going in there, right? Cause I know like Sago palms, the dogs chew on those and those are poisonous, right? So just for clarity.
So that, that was brought up by, by community members, yes. Yes, I think, I think white oleander was this, and was initially put in on the, and then the community came back and said that they were poisonous to ingest and to touch. And so, um, there, we're, yeah, we're reevaluating to make sure those aren't included.
Okay, very good. Fair enough. That's all I had.
There's gonna be um, water fountains and ones for the dogs.
Yes, there'll be a.
The restroom's gonna be similar to the one at Athwol Park?
Yes. And if you hadn't had a chance to drive by and see it, it is, it's quite nice. So working on signage and then ribbon cutting to follow, so.
Any questions or comments from the public on this agenda item?
My only question would be how easy drought tolerant type like the majority of them are.
Yes, they are, yes.
Is this in the proposal for the solar as well, this park?
No.
Wonder if they're gonna conflict with the project's implications. And then also kind of the question is, why not? This is the one over by the freeway, right? So why wouldn't it be involved in solar?
And I think that when we did the solar evaluations, we were also trying to put the solar directly where our highest usage is gonna be. And I, I think overall this is probably gonna be a low power usage facility. That's why we chose like the P D and the well sites.
Okay, thank you Daniel. Fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, revenue collection update, staff report by city manager Alex Henderson. Presentation by Alex Henderson.
All right, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, as we discussed, uh, leading up to uh, the fiscal year twenty-four budget, uh, we gave uh, updates as we, as we could with regards to our, our major revenue collections. Um, you know, one of the challenges that we have is that a lot of our stuff comes in uh, after the fact. So you know, you, you buy something downtown in June. Uh, we don't see that money until August. Uh, so just for an example from a sales tax standpoint. So tonight I'm just gonna go over uh, the fiscal year twenty-three uh, final reports as of, as of September first. It's possible that we may uh, still get a, a few uh, numbers in, but for the most part, this is uh, this is where we're at. Uh, the, the majority of these, uh, in fact, the five of the six are, are part of our general fund. The only one that is not part of the general fund is our uh, one percent uh, measure E, uh, public safety tax. Um, but I have included that here because obviously it's uh, one of our uh, major revenue sources and also uh, of high importance uh, for the community and the organization. So you can kind of see our breakdown here of, of all of those amounts, uh, and, and where those funds come from. Uh, so I'll just jump in here, uh, just talking about our regular sales tax. Again, that's, that's known as a Bradley Burn sales tax. That's separate from uh, the measure E, uh, dollar amount that we get. Uh, it's a smaller, uh, once you'll see when we get to the measure E amount, it, it's a smaller of the two sales taxes based upon how the state, uh, allocates those funds. Uh, you can see here that outside of the nineteen twenty, which is obviously uh, heavily impacted by uh, COVID, uh, uh, those numbers for the last five years have been increasing steadily. So those, those are good things. We've been uh, diversifying, uh, our sales tax base, uh, you know, both in the downtown, but also in the community uh, at large. Um, you know, uh, back when Kmart was open and uh, in its heyday, it used to account for about twelve percent of our sales tax. And was, you know, about a hundred and, to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So it was a, a significant amount at that point. So thankfully, we've been able to uh, replace that, uh, and, and grow from, from that standpoint. But you can see here, uh, where we're at, um, just from a quarterly standpoint. Um, uh, and then there's a little bit of a, you can see month by month, this is the same breakdown, but you can kind of see there. You'll see that uh, you know, every quarter, you know, September, December, March and June, those are higher numbers. But that's mostly due to how the state allocates the funds to us. They give us what they call advances uh, every couple of months. And then what they do, what they call a cleanup uh, at the quarter. And so those numbers are just naturally higher because they're, uh, sort of like a, a true up on your, on your solar bill. Too soon? All right. Uh, uh, next one, uh, public safety, uh, sales tax, uh, measure E. Um, so uh, interesting here, uh, we've, we've seen a pretty uh, significant growth. Uh, up until this last year, uh, we were anticipating that it would grow. Um, but you'll see that uh, the bottom right-hand number in June uh, was much lower. Um, and so uh, we have, we've received the funds at this point, but we haven't yet uh, had our, we use a third-party tax consultant who provides us with a breakdown of uh, the sectors and, and how they do. Um, so I haven't been able to uh, yet uh, figure out what the reason for that is. It could just be, you know, there was a lot of money that was uh, put into the uh, economy, you know, through stimulus and things like that. People, um, you know, buying cars, things, you know, so obviously measure E gets a portion of car purchases. Um, unlike the Bradley Burns one. So once I have a better uh, understanding of, of, of why that amount is lower, then I'll be able to report on that. But uh, still uh, significant, uh, obviously you can see here, you know, compared to Bradley Burns, we, we collect a, almost a million, uh, one point one million more in measure E. So uh, obviously of, of vital importance for, for both of our departments here. You can see um, that, that significant amount. And again, uh, just a breakdown by month, uh, and the same, same situation with, with the quarterly payments. Uh, these are our other uh, non-sales tax. Uh, and again, these, these are all uh, general fund revenue source collections here. And so again, you can look at a five-year snapshot. You'll see uh, a growth really uh, in all of the areas. Um, uh, except for permitting fees and permitting fees are cyclical. Um, so uh, certainly in uh, nineteen twenty and twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two is probably when you had all of our housing starts. Um, really taking place kind of at the same time. So some of those uh, have started to slow uh, uh, through this year, or there's just not as many of them. So that would be part of it. And then, you know, there are other fees uh, associated with um, site plan reviews. Uh, you can all, I would also say that between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, um, you had a lot of uh, one-time dollars coming in from like T-Mobile, right? They did a, a significant commercial uh, tenant improvement, uh, which would have added to those permits and fees. And also includes things like site plan, you know, there are collections for, for Dave's uh, services as well. So, um, while those numbers are certainly important, they, some of those permits and fees are also offset by expenditures too. So I would look at um, sort of the motor vehicle license fees, the transient occupancy and the property tax, um, as being, you know, sort of the, the major ones that we, that we count on um, from year to year. Uh, and then this is just a two-year comparison where you see uh, those, uh, all of our major sources of revenue, um, just side by side. Uh, so again, uh, mostly uh, moderate growth, uh, except for a, a, a couple of small areas. That concludes my report, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions on any of the slides that I went over.
Questions from council on this agenda item? No questions from the public on this agenda item? Okay. Thank you, Alex. Next, we have, council reports and staff communications, seven point one, Community Service Commission. We met August twenty-third. As Adam was just saying, and it was, that, the update Adam just gave us on the dog park was pretty much our meeting was. And uh, the Community Service Commission, they approved that uh, everything that Adam just told us about, yes, on, for the dog park. Seven point two, Public Safety Committee, nothing to report. Seven point three, Chamber of Commerce.
We meet next week.
Seven point four, Economic Development.
We haven't, we have not met. We haven't, we have not met.
Seven point five, Finance Committee.
We met on the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. The meeting on the twenty-eighth, we talked about the solar array project, we went through today with the financing options. And we also had discussion regarding the large sports complex financing. That was a lengthy conversation about our financing options with general bond obligations and ways to potentially finance that. You know, ultimately, we're talking about financing a forty-five, sixty, seventy-five million dollar project. So we had to look at all of our possible options for that. You know, we can get into it a little bit further if you guys want, but at the end of it, we're talking about bond obligations every year, four, five, six and a half million dollars. So from the financing standpoint of it, it does not seem like a financially viable project for the city as of right now. So that was, that was kind of the conclusion of the Finance Committee for now with the sports park. We can go back and reassess that at another time if things change, but as of right now, the liability we would have to incur seems to outweigh our means.
Seven point six, Planning Commission, nothing to report. Seven point seven, South Kings GSA.
Nothing to report.
Seven point eight, Downtown Business Improvement District.
We met yesterday, but there's nothing new to report.
Seven point nine, Council Governments.
Meeting was canceled and should have another one next month.
Seven ten, Council Member Reports. Do we have anything? No? Seven eleven, City Manager's Report.
Just a reminder that the next meeting is canceled because of the California League of Cities Annual Conference. So the September twentieth meeting is canceled, that's all I have.
Future agenda items? We have none, correct? If anybody has anything, okay. With that, I will adjourn tonight's city council meeting. Thank you all for coming.